We do have seven o'clock. I'd like to call a decent fourth meeting on the person. Board of Attorney, Commissioners, and Orders this time. And recognize that we do have a quorum. I will lead us in an imocation, after which Commissioner Sims will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. One thing prior to the imocation, I'd ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Brian Keith Perier, who passed away suddenly yesterday, Sunday, December 3rd. Mr. Perier was an employer of Person County, serving in the Inspection Department of the Falls of Code. And the celebration of his life will be conducted at 2:00 p.m. Thursday this week. And I have you, Masters Church, at a moment of silence, please. Now, let's pray together, if you desire. Our merciful and heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life today, the gift of opportunity, the freedom that we have to assemble here tonight and conduct the business of the county. We pray for your divine intervention and guidance in all of our decisions. And we pray that they will be of the best interest of the people of Person County. We pray too for all of our military men and women who are serving in various places around the world to provide us with the freedom that we enjoy this very moment tonight. Thank you for our law enforcement and emergency workers, as they are always striving to protect the citizens of our county. Pray your blessings upon them for all things we give you. Thanks and appreciation, in the holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. You will please stand with me beside the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is organization of the board, and we turn the gavel over to Attorney Ellis Hamptons.
Thank you, good evening. Now, I always enjoy this once-a-year opportunity to preside at the Board of Commissioners meeting, only for the limited purpose of the board electing its chair. Without objection from the board, I am about to open the floor for nominations. And if there is more than one nomination for the office of chair, then I propose to ask the board to vote on the nominations in the order in which they were offered. So without further ado, is there a nomination for the office of chair of the Board of Commissioners?
I'm going to nominate Gordon Powell as chairman.
Thank you. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Gordon Powell for chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'll say thank you, but thank you, fellow board members. It's an honor, it's a privilege, and especially being nominated and elected by my peers. I thank you for that, and it's an honor to serve the people of Person County. Okay, the next item would be then a selection of the vice chair, and at this time, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Derek Sims.
We have Derek Sims nominated. Any others? Hearing none, all in favor of Derek Sims as being vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you for the nomination.
Okay, moving along, discussion and adjustment or approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion for the approval?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Chairman Powell.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is a public hearing, and we'll recognize Mr. Chris Bulley. It is time to come forward, and we will be looking at rezoning map amendment application, RZO 223. And it is a request by the applicant, Public Service Company of North Carolina Incorporated. Mr. Bulley.
Pipeline, it's the Upper Piedmont Renewable Energy Company with the renewable energy gas facility there. This is a rezoning application, and the proposed land use should be in the most appropriate zoning district. Going through as a special use permit application would have kept the project in an RC zoning district. A UDO was proposed to be adopted tonight, but it's taken a different tact, where we would have defined liquid natural gas as a permitted use. The landfill and others are still zoned RC. The future land use has industrial on existing developments, and we need to update that future land use map to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site plan is required past this hearing, and we will require all permits and copies of federal, state, and other applications, including management plans, both emergency and environmental, prior to any condition of issuance for a zoning permit. The watershed mitigation is required in the Falls News Basin for onsite mitigation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dominion, who can answer any technical questions and has their own presentation, Mr. Harris, I believe. Thank you, sir. And you can just move through.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Powell, Commissioners, and staff, thank you all for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm going to let my colleague, Aaron, do most of the talking tonight, but I wanted to make a few introductory remarks before I invite him up. Aaron's going to talk about the purpose of the facility, some of the safeguards that we have in place, and mechanics of how it works. I'm Rusty Harris. I am Vice President, General Manager, Dominion Energy, also President of PSNC Energy. Have had the pleasure to serve in that role since 2006. And in that role, oversee the operations of our gas business in North Carolina. So that would include the operations and maintenance of our system. We serve about 650,000 customers in North Carolina. I'm responsible for ensuring that our service levels to our customers are high, and that we have adequate resources to ensure that we can meet our needs of our customers on our coldest and peak days of the year. And so that's a result of a long history that we have here in North Carolina. We've been in existence a little over 80 years, and in fact, we were the first natural gas utility formed in North Carolina several years ago. And as a result of that, we have a lot of expertise in our company. In fact, just last week, wrote a note to our manager of our transmission system. So he oversees the operation of our large pipelines. I congratulated him for 50 years of service to PSNC Energy. And so we have people like him throughout our organization, and a lot of expertise in running our business. More locally, we've been in Person County since the '60s. We have transmission and distribution facilities in Person County. In fact, our transmission line that is on this site that we're talking about tonight is a very critical pipeline for us. It's essential to bring in natural gas to the 11 counties that we serve in this region of North Carolina. As I mentioned, we have this transmission pipeline and distribution pipelines to provide service here in Person County. Natural gas is very intertwined with economic development. 80% of the largest employers here in Person County rely on natural gas for their operations. And that's true for new companies that may want to consider locating in Person County as well. Natural gas is essential to many manufacturing operations, and so our job is to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to allow economic development happen here and across our service territory. And we want to strengthen our system and make sure that we're able to do that in the future. There's one item I want to speak to briefly in particular, and that is the fact that you may have heard that Dominion Energy has an agreement to sell our business to a company called Enbridge. So I just want to make a couple of comments about that. That is a transaction that is proposed. It will occur pending regulatory approvals. So we believe sometime in the third quarter, fourth quarter of 2024, likely those approvals will happen, and we would become part of Enbridge. I don't know how much you know about Enbridge. It's one of the largest oil and gas pipeline companies in North America. 20% of the natural gas that flows in North America flows through Enbridge pipelines. I've had an opportunity to get to know some of the folks over there since this transaction was announced. And I can tell you, they have a tremendous amount of expertise when it comes to natural gas infrastructure. If this transaction is approved, I look forward to working with them. But one thing I want you to know is that myself and my colleagues across North Carolina will be here if we become part of Enbridge. Like I said, I've been in my job since 2006, and many of the folks that I work with have been here much longer than that. We've been here for decades, and we'll be here if we become part of Enbridge. And so I want to reassure you of that, if you have any concerns about who you'll be dealing with should we become part of Enbridge. In fact, we've been through a change of ownership before. We've only been part of Dominion since 2019. And like I tell our folks, that sometimes the logos on the trucks change, or the shirts change, but the people wearing them don't. And that's kind of how we see it, if we become part of another company. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here and for your consideration of our rezoning request. We hope that the information we provide tonight provides some additional clarity and information to help you make your decision. So thank you very much, and I'm going to turn things over to Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Rusty. Alrighty. So I got a brief presentation here. So let's back up. What is LNG? So LNG stands for liquefied natural gas. So that's cooling natural gas down negative 260, turn into a liquid. It's 600 times denser than gas. So why is this facility needed? Well, for supplier liability. Basically, this facility will function as a battery. We will store gas when the demand is low, and send it out when it's high, on those cold winter nights. And this is not a new project. There's other similar facilities. The Cary LNG facility is operating there since like 1976. We just recently trucked one outside of Salt Lake City, Utah. There's other operators in the North Carolina region. So how the process works is we take pipeline quality natural gas, the same natural gas that you burn inside your homes. We will take it through our pretreatment system to remove carbon dioxide in water that will freeze up during the liquefaction process. Those impurities will actually be sent back into the pipeline network. The gas will then be liquefied using a nitrogen refrigerant system. The heavier hydrocarbons will also precipitate off and be sent back into the pipeline system. So once we have that liquid natural gas, we'll pump it to our insulated steel tank, store it there for use. So then, once we have those cold winter nights when gas has a peak need, we'll pump it out, send it through our shell and tube vaporizers, turn it back to a gas, and send it back to our pipeline system to be used by the severs. As Chris pointed out, our proposed location is along Palanima Maria Road, the 486 acres. Of that 486 acres, we're only going to be developing the center 70 acres for this project. And the upper right corner of the screen is the proposed LNG tank. Our control building is here, located in the south. And the pipe, the natural gas will flow into the facility, go through our pretreatment system, flow through to our coal box where it's liquefied, then pumped into our storage tank. Here's a couple of different angles of the LNG facility, looking from the north, and then of the proposed LNG tank. So environmental highlights, so that 70-acre development, we've located in a way to avoid any impact to existing streams of wetlands on the site. Additionally, through our numerous desktop and field studies, we have identified no resources that would be impacted by the proposed development through construction and operation.
I'd ask you folks to respect the speaker and this audience here tonight. While this hearing is going on, it's a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So runoff will be maintained through all the state and local regulations during construction and operation of the facility. Facility water usage, I know that's been a hot topic. Water is not used as part of the liquefaction process. Well water will only be used for the employee facilities and to refill the firewater storage tank in case of emergency. The initial firewater tank, we've looked at, you know, filling that over several days to minimize any impact. Furthermore, not listed here, we've also been working with the city of Roxboro to source our construction water to further minimize that, to do the initial firewater tank through the city of Roxboro, Roxboro, Roxboro water. And then leak prevention, we have, we will adhere to a regular inspection schedule, and additionally, we will have gas monitoring detection devices throughout the facility. So safety and security, both Enbridge and Dominion Energy have extensive experience with LNG facilities. We both own and operate multiple throughout many states that we serve. We're subject to stringent federal and state regulations. As I mentioned, we have onsite firewater storage and firewater protection to safeguard the facility in case of incident. We will have a robust hazard and security detection system, including gas detection, flame detection, low-temperature gas detection, and of course, motion detection. Additionally, with security, we have dual security fencing around the facility to prevent any intrusion. This plant will be staffed 24/7/365. And then we've already started, and we'll continue to coordinate with local first responders throughout construction and operation of this facility. throughout construction and operation of this facility. We have a website available. We've received multiple questions through our email also listed there. And we've continued to update our fact sheets and address those questions that we receive throughout this process. At this time, does the commission have any questions for our team?
Any questions, anyone? I do have a question. What is the process of deliquefying and transporting? How, is that, you don't have a pipeline in the air to pump it back into, do you?
So the site we selected, there's two existing pipelines that Dominion owns and operates. So we actually, we pump the gas out of the LNG tank. We should send it through a shell and tube vaporizer, get it back to a gas state, and then pump it right back into our pipeline network.
Back into the primary line?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, did you get his name and title?
I did, yes, sir.
All recorded? Okay. Want to make sure. Dominion representatives. Time allowed per speaker, with the number that we've got, you will be allowed two minutes per speaker. And I'm asking that speakers consider the time allowed for each speaker and be considerate of others who would like to speak as well. A buzzer or beeper will sound at the end of the two-minute period, and everyone is expected to abide by that request and do so peacefully and respectfully. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding. This is an important matter, as well as, again, decorum should be honored and respected by all. Okay, do we have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Now, a motion to go into public hearing? Any discussion? Here are none. I will, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. So we're officially into the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, you will have the honor of introducing our speakers?
Yes, sir. So in favor of, we do have one person. We did have a lot of confusion on the sign-in sheets. So is Zika Wolfe here?
Yes.
Are you in favor of or in opposition of?
I'm in opposition.
Okay, you signed the wrong sheet.
Okay.
So moving on, so Ms. Wolfe, you're first on the list.
And is that going to show on the monitor? Or just?
Yes, sir. Where is it?
There it is.
All right.
It was.
I am Zika Wolfe. I have a small house on 10 acres on Thunder Road, less than a mile from the proposed Mariah Energy Center. I grew up in Kansas and dreamed of living in the big city like my father, who was a New Yorker. After leaving home, I moved to Denver, to Boston, to the Lower East Side of New York City, and even San Juan, Puerto Rico, to experience the culture of my Spanish ancestors, and finally to North Carolina. First, to Orange County, then Chatham County, and what I hope would be my final move, to Person County. This to say that all this moving around taught me what I really needed and wanted, the peace and quiet of rural living. Person County fit that need, yes. I must drive 20 minutes for a supermarket, but that's a small price to pay for no nearby industrial parks or police sirens wailing night and day. For 25 years, I have gladly mailed my yearly check for property taxes, always with a grateful heart for being able to live here in peace, thankful for good roads and a nearby Lowe's for buying materials for home products, projects. I wake up every day and give thanks for the seclusion, quiet wildlife, and delicious well water. But this proposed change from rural to heavy industrial, just down for the road from my oasis of calm and beauty, has turned my dream into a nightmare. Please leave our rural life intact. Please vote no to this proposed zoning change.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mary Bennett. I live at 86 Elderberry Lane. I'm sure that when you entered into discussions with Dominion, that you did a risk benefit analysis. And I trust that you determined that at that time, the benefits outweighed the risks. And I think we're all learning that the potential risks are maybe greater than we have first known. When you were considering this proposal, I believe you were unaware of the LNG plant in Huntersville, North Carolina, where soil and wells were contaminated and still are by hazardous material that was buried on the site. Dominion has said the material in Huntersville was supposed to have been tested and material at their site would be. But the Huntersville incident was deemed to be due to human error. There is no way, as good as they're trying to be, there's no way to ensure protection from things like human error, equipment malfunction, and acts of nature in a facility like this. The fire at a Massachusetts plant in 2022 was due to equipment failure. The pipeline that overpressurized in Texas in 2022 was due to human error. Natural force damage at a plant in Texas in 2020 was due to hurricane. The fire in a Texas plant in 2020 was due to equipment failure. There are many more incidents like these, and many of these were not serious. But it only takes one serious incident, one Huntersville, to have devastating effects. We understand the hardest thing today is the loss of reputation that would come from pulling out of this deal at this late stage. At the planning board meeting, Ms. James argued that if we deny zoning, we will show that we're not welcoming and we can't be the county that continues to reject economic growth. To me, this is just not a good reason to approve a business that pollutes our county and puts our residents at risk. We absolutely would welcome businesses that truly benefit us and that we can be proud of, not afraid of. We know it is a big deal to stop this train at this late stage. We know that. And we know your reputation as a good partner might suffer, but Dominion will move on, and we're here to stay. So you have the opportunity to gain the reputation of being a board that truly listens to and acts on the concerns of the people you work with and live with and are here to serve. And I hope that this reputation is the one you care more about. Thank you for listening.
My name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in Person County 31 years. Since I never got a reply the first time, I would like to resubmit the questions from Person County residents. I wish to incorporate them by reference, and they are crucial factors for the board's consideration prior to your approval. On November 15th, 2021, four of you signed the Joint Comprehensive Land Use Plan. On page six of that plan, it states, "A number of residents who call Person County home commute to Raleigh Durham for work." This statement is referring to my husband and myself. What better place to raise a family than in this small community in the country where everyone grows up together and looks out for one another? For my husband, the long commute was far outweighed by being able to have a big garden, sit in his tree stand before he went to work in the morning, and come home and tend to his bees when he got done. I can tell you without hesitation that when we were looking for a place in the country, if this LNG facility was here, there is no way we would have moved here. We would have moved on to another county. And I guarantee you that other commuters today will do the same. The first principle of the land use plan the four of you signed stated, "Celebrating our rural character and lifestyle." I know this is not a legally binding agreement, but when you signed this, you made a pledge to us that you would uphold this plan in good faith. By signing it, you took that pledge, and the Mariah Energy Center is clearly a contradiction to this principle. If you vote to rezone for this project, you will be going back on that pledge. And if you break that pledge with Mariah, which community is next? Is Olive Hill next? Is Allensville next? Is Hurdle Mills next? The constituents of this county are no longer safe, and their homes are no longer safe. Only Dominion Energy stands to profit from this facility. The people of Mariah, its people, its wildlife, and its economy will suffer. Mariah Energy Center is bad for Person County.
Next, we have Carolyn Manjo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've talked to you before. I'd like to talk to you tonight about three conversations that I've had. The first was with people who had been to the zoning board and were so disheartened that they said, "We're not going to come tonight because they won't listen to us anyway." These folks came tonight because we're trusting you to listen to us. So thank you for listening. The second conversation that I've had, many conversations actually, with Dominion folks here, and I'll tell you, they're nice, friendly people. The only thing I would say to you is that they are speaking to you out of their need for this, for their jobs. We're speaking to you because we love this county. We live here. They don't live here. So please consider that when you talk to them. And third, last Thursday, I had a conversation with someone who has ties to the Person County Economic Development Commission. And this person said to me, "We're going to take it by imminent domain anyway." That comment, that remark, plus the way the zoning board would not listen to us, and went against their own storage of hazardous materials is not allowed in any zone, and the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which you've heard about before. All of that make it sound to me like the government, our government, is going against its own citizens. And so I would, I just beg of you to remember that the decision you make tonight is going to affect your homeowners, your farms, your businesses, your future development throughout the county. We all depend on you to protect our properties and our safety, to respect your zoning, and to not spot zone 486 wooded acres into an industrial zone for a foreign gas company that promised you $800,000. I just want to thank you all for listening, and I hope God blesses you in making a very difficult decision. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to your constituents. In my hand, I have something that was shared with you in a red folder two or three weeks ago. This is a several-page account of a meeting that local residents had when we first heard about this gas project. There were maybe 50 or 60 people there, and they wrote down questions that we might have of you. And it ended up being 108 questions divided into 14 headings. Have you, this was given to you, two or maybe three, have you discussed this together as Has this been on one of your agendas?
Sir, as I said earlier, this is not a dialogue. This is a public hearing. Speak your, speak your...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is the root of the challenge. I'm an apolitical person. When we heard about this, 108 questions were put on a piece, on some paper to ask for your feedback. In the remaining weeks, we have determined what we see as the drawbacks, serious drawbacks with this venture. We have been begging, with questions like this, which you are not responding to, we are begging that you tell us what the advantages are. And I have yet to hear anybody tell us what the advantages are, other than the details that we know, the tax income and so forth. I'm going to have to give you a very lighthearted verbal spanking. This is the crock, no, seriously. These people are here because you are not responding to your constituents, and this is a serious problem.
Next speaker, Mary Kay Doyle.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I live in Rougemont, and 30% of the country right now is currently under an unprecedented extreme drought. According to groundwater levels from US GS Water Information System and Groundwater Monitoring Network, overuse is draining and damaging our country's aquifers. 25% have declined significantly over the past 40 years because more water is being pumped out than nature can replenish. In the past decade, 40% hit all-time lows, and last year was the worst yet. Aquifers fail when they are rapidly depleted, permanently damaging them. The land settles as the water is pumped out, leaving less space for new water to fill the aquifer. And the deeper aquifers beneath impermeable clay and rock can take thousands of years to recharge. And yet, you're considering allowing Dominion Energy to remove 360,000 gallons of water from our aquifers, and another 360,000 gallons if they put in a second LNG tank. This could prematurely shorten the life of our aquifers. 720,000 gallons of water in case of a fire. To be clear, water won't extinguish an LNG fire. It is only for containment until everything burned off up into the atmosphere. I am very grateful for your service, but is this really what you want your legacy to be?
Thank you.
Next speaker, Deborah Moore. Next, Speaker Deborah Moore. In favor of or opposition?
Opposition.
This is an opposition to...
Good evening, gentlemen. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I think I will, since I signed the wrong list, but that's okay. Thank you all for being here. I have to say that everyone that's spoken before me has had some very valid points. I lived in rural Indiana before my husband and I moved here in 2016. We came to Person County because it was rural. We wanted to be where there wasn't developments, there wasn't big industrial complexes. I grew up in Indiana smelling the paper mill from the river, the Walbash River. They contaminated that river over the years, but we finally got it cleaned up. I don't want to see contaminants a few miles from my house where I live. I have enjoyed living here, but this proposed facility has some serious drawbacks for everyone in this community. And y'all represent us. You have the final say over what's going to happen here, and I really hope you think long and hard over what this can do to our natural resources. And the lady that just spoke on the water and the aquifers, that is a serious concern. The governor just declared state of emergency not a month ago because of the serious drought conditions in North Carolina. Our natural resources have to be preserved, and y'all are our last line of defense here on this issue. And I really hope that you consider this and all these detriments before you make your final decision. Thank you.
My name is Lois Brown. I live on Thunder Road in Rougemont. I'm 84 years old, and I live alone in a log house on 10 acres of beautiful wooded land. The logs for the house came from the property, and I did some of the construction. I've wanted to live in the woods since I was a little girl. It took me almost 70 years, but I finally got there. I love it, and it's private, and the air is clean, and I have good water, and I enjoy the birds and the wildlife in its home. At the end of October, I received a letter in the mail telling me that my land is within 500 feet of the proposed Mariah Energy Center. My world came crashing down. I was terrified. All of my water comes from my well. What will happen if because of this center, my well doesn't have enough water, or it becomes contaminated? And how will my life be affected every day if I'm constantly worrying if maybe today's the day when I run out of water, or it's contaminated? And who will help me? And where will I live? And what will happen when they start blasting the rocks? We know that Dominion is selling out to the Canadian company Enbridge, and Enbridge has a terrible record in environmental violations. I don't know if you're aware of that. And if you are, why would you allow that to be built in our county? We're your neighbors. You're supposed to look out for us, not sell us out. If this facility is built here, it will destroy our quality of life and endanger our lives. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioners, let me introduce myself. My name is Charles Howerton. I'm a lifelong resident of Person County. By degree, I'm a biologist. By profession, I'm a scientist. And by fortune, I'm a farmer. By profession in clinical research, I am consistently charged with ensuring patient welfare. I constantly weigh the risk versus the benefits. I'm legally mandated to share any known adverse effects with the patient so they can make an informed decision to participate or not participate. Mr. Commissioners, Dominion Energy, I want to charge each of you with this same obligation. Share all known potential side effects, risks, and adverse effects to allow Person County citizens and yourselves to make a meaningful decision and have a meaningful voice in this decision to allow Dominion Energy into our county. Mr. Commissioners, I've thought long and hard over this proposal. From my perspective, the cons far outweigh any benefits. The largest positive outcome, the only one that I can really see, is a monetary incentive of $800,000 per year for this proposed payout. I even have one question. Is this amount even inflation-adjusted over time? Mr. Commissioners, I request you do not prostitute the people of Person County to Dominion Please listen to your constituents that are here and oppose this action. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bob Brower. I'm speaking tonight as the chairperson for the Person County Environmental Issues Advisory Committee in opposition to the proposed Mariah Energy Center. I'll focus my comments specifically on the impact to air and water. The nominal greenhouse gas emissions from the MECC are expected to be nearly 66,000 tons, 1,000 tons annually. To put this in perspective, that's equivalent to nearly 13,000 additional passenger vehicles. This is a wrong choice when we're trying to remove carbon from our atmosphere. The expected particulate matter emissions amount to nearly four tons annually, including 10-micron particles and smaller, which can get into the human lung, and 2.5-micron particles and smaller, which can get into the human bloodstream. Older adults and children are the most vulnerable to the health issues caused by these particulate pollution. The health issues include asthma and decreasing lung function. The MECC is also annually, will annually release 95 tons of carbon monoxide, 35 tons of nitrous oxide, 52 tons of volatile organic compounds, and four tons of hazardous air pollutions, which are known to cause human health impacts. All of the properties surrounding the proposed MECC depend on wells for their clean drinking water. Any well productivity impact, as well as contamination impact caused by the MECC would be devastating. In the area of groundwater contamination, Person County should have already learned its lesson with the type of environmental, with this type of environmental disaster. In the northeastern part of the county, GMH Electronics EPA Superfund Site created a groundwater contamination plume, which polluted 45 surrounding private wells. The result of this was the Roxboro City water had to be pumped out to those parts of the county. At least one LNG plant we know of has also created groundwater contamination, and that's the Huntersville site that has already been mentioned. I strongly advise the Commissioners to not approve the MECC project at this time. The potential and real environmental impact are far too great in comparison to the negligible MECC benefit to the Person County residents.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen, and your service to the county. I want to suggest to you tonight, argue to you, that you not make a decision on this issue now, that we simply do not know enough about the impact of this plant. We were among some of the first people that had an opportunity to talk to Dominion. They made a very good presentation to us. It was open, and we challenged them very hard about what happens to the stuff that you're taking out of the natural gas. Where does it go? They had a very simple solution. It goes back in the pipeline. Sounds a little strange, but in our economy, it makes sense. It goes right back in the pipeline. There isn't any... Oh, okay. And we use electricity to run all the compressors. We don't burn any of our natural gas for power. Oh, that sounded good. Then we heard about Huntersville, and some poison that was buried in the ground there got out. Oh, yeah, well, there is a little bit, but we have procedures. Then, in last week's paper, was published their air permit application. 65,576 tons of CO2 from that plant every year, plus assorted worse stuff, nitrous oxides, volatiles, carcinogens. It's the equivalent of 13,000 to 14,000 automobiles worth of carbon monoxide. I can't even imagine what they need that much power with. That's how much we don't know. Think about it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in Timberlake. I've lived there for nearly 20 years with my family. We moved up from North Durham. We lived there for nearly 20 years. Planning boards and boards of commissioners greatly impact the lives, livelihood, and lifestyles of the residents and neighbors of their counties. My understanding is, there is usually a plan with goals that benefit the county sustainably, environmentally, and economically. The plan is designed so that the residents can feel secure in the progression of those goals. But drastically diverting from those community-held goals, as in rezoning from rural conservation to general heavy industrial, creates anxiety, insecurity, but most of all, distrust. I believe as important, or perhaps more important than a plan, is a vision. Unfortunately, I sense that the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board are woefully lacking in a sustainable, healthy vision for our county. Southern Person has the potential to be just that, a healthy, sustainable, vibrant bedroom community for the ever-growing North Durham area. Attracting residents with purchasing power brings needs for jobs, homes, restaurants, grocery stores, businesses, and more, small businesses, tax revenue. This is the way to grow a community, a county, not to devastate nearly 500 acres with toxic materials poisoning the air, contaminating the water, displacing wildlife, sickening residents. Unfortunately, the Planning Board displays insufficient curiosity and little to no understanding of the complicated depths of this proposal by Dominion. So, I wholeheartedly hope that you Commissioners recognize the gravity of Dominion's rezoning request. Steep yourself in the knowledge that we, your constituents, have brought to you, and dig deeper into the negative consequences this rezoned Dominion will cause. Don't let us think it's a done deal. We deserve better.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service. When I arrived this evening, someone was chanting, "No harm to our farm," and I think that's where I'm coming from. I'm a family physician, Duke-educated, practiced in Durham 21 years solo, but I own a farm now at 6910 Alina Mariah Road, which is a neighbor, a very close neighbor of this proposed project. I also own another farm called the Hundred Acre Wood, right next to Grass Grazed, which is the 6910 Alina Mariah Road. I lease Grass Grazed Farm to an African-American vet, who for four years has been raising meat hogs and pasture chickens to serve local meat requirements. He's done an amazing job. He practices in sustainable, regenerative ways to preserve the land. This proposed plant puts the quality of the groundwater, the quality of the soil, the quality of the air in jeopardy. I believed as a physician in preventive medicine. It drew me to the life of farming, because the health of the soil is the seed of health, the health of the air, the health of the water, requirements for health. So, this is a simple act of preventive medicine, Commissioners. We'll know on this proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing us. My name is Susan Jacques. I served on the Board of Directors of Downtown Durham Inc. for several years, starting soon after its inception in 1993, and for several years after that. It's an organization that focused on revitalizing downtown Durham and bringing economic development to the area. People moved to Person County because of the beautiful land, because of the good down-home people, and because of the lower cost of living. People are moving to the bordering counties of Wake and Durham for these same reasons, but they also want a place that offers amenities, accessible outdoor areas, interesting business and restaurants, recreation facilities. And that's what larger companies want, too. They know they can't attract good workers to their new facility if those things aren't in place. And in today's competitive labor market, that really matters. We've watched as counties around us have invested in infrastructure to attract larger companies, and in amenities like community parks and walking trails and recreation facilities. This is what stimulates economic development and growth in a county. Bringing in things like this liquid natural gas storage facility is the opposite of stimulating economic development and growth. We would not have bought the 45 acres we own, we would not have moved to Person County 33 years ago if that facility had existed back then. Southern Person County is the prime land ripe for development, for attracting people who want to experience this beautiful land, the good down-home people, and the lower cost of living, because Southern Person County is closest to the jobs. The Mariah Energy Center is the equivalent of shooting ourselves in the foot. It is literally creating a barrier to future healthy and impactful economic development in this county. Please don't move forward on this.
Don Norinski.
My wife's a hard act to follow, but I'll try. The Board of Commissioners are elected by the citizens of Person County, and as such, is charged with promoting and protecting the interests and rights of their constituents. However, once the veil of secrecy was listed on Dominion's rezoning request, any observation of how this board and the planning commission has conducted themselves leads to the inevitable conclusion that the board has actually been doing the bidding of Dominion Energy, a corporation that desperately needs this project to be approved, and quickly, so that their pending sale to Enbridge can bail them out of a... sale to Enbridge can bail them out of a four-billion-dollar debt and impending bankruptcy. What facts, now made public over the past several weeks, support such a disappointing conclusion? Dominion's own website has a timeline which states they began development and planning of this project with county officials since at least July of 2022, and this was verified recently by the board's chairman. He also was quoted recently in the papers having a "closed-door sessions" with the county EDC, which also had been in discussions with Dominion over several months. Why closed doors? He was further quoted as stating he had been brought down to Cary by Dominion to see a facility there. Several citizens have told this board previously that they reviewed videos of the commissioners' meetings over these past eighteen months, and there was never a hint of all this activity mentioned. Anyone who attended the planning commission got the same feeling: a rush to vote with scant public discussion and even less board member discussion. Finally, back to Dominion's own timeline, in which they state buying construction equipment would begin as soon as October 2023 for construction beginning January 2024, of course, well before any vote could have ever been taken. Really? What company would begin buying equipment for a project that hasn't even been approved yet unless they have been assured that the approval is, in fact, a done deal? In addition, it is clear to me that this board has not done the due due necessary for such a grave decision, and since the news of the project broke, it has been the citizens and constituents who have brought forth to the board in the paper so many facts and relevant scientific studies to show that there is actually little economic benefit for the county when placed against the risks and dangers the facility poses. I'd like to take one more minute to talk about Enbridge. An easy Google search, unfortunately, reveals that this Canadian corporation taking over for Dominion is the second-most fined energy corporation in the entire country, with over one hundred and fifteen major consequential violations in the recent past totaling over two-hundred-and-eighty-three million dollars in fines. The state of Wisconsin wouldn't even allow them to do business there for several months because of multiple violations, and they refused to fix them. Yet the chairman here was quoted in that same article saying he had not heard of any problem with any other such-type facility. While I hope he's hearing it now, albeit on the eve of the vote. This is not a corporation we can trust with our health and safety, insulated from any accountability, some two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-twenty-five-hundred miles away in Calgary, Canada, operating here under several U.S. shell companies. So if this board has known all these facts, especially the health and safety facts, shame on them for not disclosing all these risks and dangers to the public. Conversely, if the board only knows now, now because their constituents have found out for them, shame on them for not doing the required due diligence before scheduling a final vote. But there is a remedy, a way to restore the public's trust in you and educate yourselves sufficiently. I suggest you table this vote on rezoning for at least three months for all due diligence to be accomplished and allow for more local citizen input. County officials have apparently negotiated-
Your time has expired, sir.
Okay. Can I have one more minute?
No, sir. You're taking away from someone else's time, sir.
Thank you. One more minute. County officials have apparently... I say table this vote on rezoning. County officials have apparently negotiated with Dominion for eighteen months. Why not hear from other voices and impartial experts for a few more months, especially the citizens most impacted? You visited Cary. Why not come out and walk this beautiful land? Get your feet wet in the many creeks and water trade areas-
Sir, I'm going to ask you one more time. Please, sit down. Please, sit down. Move along to the next speaker. Madam Clerk, if you could call the next speaker, please.
Heidi Grabel. If you missed your name, you don't get to talk. Next person will be skipped, so the next person will be Teresa Arons. Can't hear your name if you're too loud.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we must conduct this civilly. So let's... He would not respect the rules, so we're trying to move along. Please proceed, ma'am. Please proceed.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us tonight, at least most of us. I want to recognize the incredibly difficult work you do for Person County as county commissioners. We hope you take it as seriously as we do. On November 5th, I sent all of you an email asking you one simple question: what will be your legacy? My hope, only a month ago, was that you would look into your hearts and choose an option other than Mariah Energy Center. In spite of this testimony that you're hearing tonight, with facts, figures, and, in my opinion, much more important, heartfelt stories from your constituents, I fear you have already made up your minds. Maybe you decided almost two years ago. We will never know. We do know that you are deciding your legacy tonight, and we are your witnesses. But I have something to share that you might not know. We, your neighbors in Person County, have found our voice, and we will not be silent. We will take whatever you decide for your Person County, and we will make it our Person County. We will join together to create a better Person County, better for everyone, a Person County that we are all proud to call home. We will do this because your actions brought us together, and together, we can do anything. Make no mistake, we believe you, too, can be part of this with us. We hope you will. After all, you have the power to decide your legacy tonight, and we are all watching.
Heidi Grabel.
Madam Clerk, before you do that, let's extend that offer, that previous person that we skipped.
Yes, sir, I was going back to her. Heidi Grabel.
Still, respect the time limit and proceed.
Can you display the maps that were provided, please? These are maps of Person County and images of the plant. County commissioners-
Your name, please.
I'm sorry. I am Heidi Grabel. Commissioners, thank you for your service. My name is Heidi Grabel. I am a real estate agent, and I am a resident of North Durham County since nineteen eighty. I represent my thirty-eight other family members who share the joy and beauty of our piece of land that borders the Flat River about a mile above the start of Lake Mickey, the water source for Durham and Raleigh. I also represent many family, friends, and clients in Person County. This proposed plant would sit right on top of many families' land and farms, just like my family, who never wanted to be anywhere near anything like this proposed use. I am a real estate agent. This plant is being put in a location that is not zoned industrial, not zoned commercial. This is rural residential, and the residents of Person and Durham County feel betrayed that you would consider allowing this use in this area of the county. This will completely ruin the residential values of surrounding land and future values of homes to be built in this beautiful area of Person County, environmentally sensitive area, also where Person County has just invested a lot of money for a new park for the citizens to use. I want to ask the commissioners to please oppose this use. I also want to ask who is to benefit from the construction, destruction of environment, and industrial use facility and constant release of chemicals into our air and environment? It sounds like only the corporation will benefit. We also know that if you approve this facility in use, this opens the door for easy approval of more heavy industrial uses of surrounding land and allowing this zoning to expand in this area. This industrial use should be put in the areas of the county already zoned as industrial, not this residential and farming lower quadrant of Person County. And now I'd like to respectfully ask to see the hands of the Dominion-Enbridge representatives who would be wanting to buy land and build their next home next to this plant. And that's fine, it's rhetorical. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bella King.
Hello, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Bella King, and I am a tenth-generation citizen of Person County. The farm that's been in my family for five of those generations is in the land that you want to rezone. I understand that you already made up your minds, but given how long my family has been in this town and how much my grandparents, Bibi and Neb, and my father care about this community, it would be a complete and total injustice for me not to speak on this matter. We, as the citizens of Person County, need to stand up for ourselves. We need to stop accepting bids like this that no one else wants because we think it's all that we can get. Consider the future of your children or grandchildren. Consider my future. I'm the next generation of Person County, and this is not the future I want. I know you guys have been hearing from a lot of folks who moved here at some point in their lives, and their perspectives are important, but let me be clear: I am a born true Personian, and I am against this. My entire family is against this. A vote in support is a death sentence, not only for the people living near the facility, but for the future of our county. Please consider this.
Meg Coe.
Hi, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I... Decades ago, when I was in college, I had an engineering professor who said, "If you could build... If you could ask the designers of the facility, the energy facility, to build their home and raise their family next to the facility, see how different it would look." And that's always resonated with me, and I ask you to consider that today for the engineers or even for yourselves. I'm respectfully asking you to vote against rezoning agricultural land, agricultural land at this time. We're sitting in a gold mine, and by that, I'm referring to the farming and the permaculture farming that's going on all around Person County. In the news this week, nations of the world convened on climate action, and it will trickle down to us. Climate action, we're going to have to be providing our citizens with clean air and clean water. It's now going to be incorporated. I also wonder if you would have any pull if this goes through to reassess our property, which will be worthless, because we recently got huge tax hikes, and I think those shouldn't be in play for property that's useless if this goes through. So I ask also that, in these times of domestic terrorism, if this isn't a target for those who would wish to cause harm, thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Lampert.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I try to be short and to the point. My name's Bernard Lampert, and I live next to the Dominion pipeline off Mount Harmon Church Road. I moved to Person County in 2000, purchased some land, built a house for me and my family. Now I'm faced with an environmental threat next door. Also, my house will not be worth squat after this facility moves in, okay? All of us recognize we need economic development. That's not the question. The question is, we need decent economic development. The MEC does not provide any long-term benefits for Person County. What do we get? A couple of full-time jobs that are filled by outside Person County people. Construction is handled by an auto-state company. The tax revenue, based on Dominion's projections, of course, is less than one percent of the budget, eight-hundred thousand. How about the loss in tax revenue because of devaluation of the dwellings around it? Has not been taken into consideration. Dominion is an unstable company. Why would you deal with a company that's teetering on the edge of bankruptcy? My God, they're so deep in debt, Wall Street projections, they cannot meet even the ongoing obligations in a couple of months. Have you performed an independent, fully-burdened analysis of the long-term and short-term impact, financial impact of this monstrosity? Have you done that? Person County needs sustainable and responsible development that provides jobs, paying a living wage to Person County residents. Businesses are looking for stability, long-term predictability, infrastructure, including medical infrastructure, quality school systems, recreation opportunities, and some cultural activities such as develop downtown. What we have here is... Oh, Jesus. What we have here is totally inconsistent zoning. With school systems, it ranks four-eighty-two out of seventeen thousand six-hundred-eighty national-ranked schools. Here's something you can think of, too. What's your vision for the Person County development? I don't have any vision. You don't have any vision either. You have no long-term plan. We are dumping ground for projects that no other county wants.
Colette Lear.
Hi, my name is Colette Lear. I live on Rivergorge Run in Rougemont. My husband and I moved there twenty-seven years ago. We have two children that were born and raised in Person County. We have been very involved. But to be clear, I'm speaking not just for myself, but for my subdivision of Deep Creek. One of the things, when we drove out to look at the land of Person County, one of the things we saw was beauty, and we fell in love with Person County. My twelve-plus acres borders Deep Creek along the back. Deep Creek borders almost every neighbor that I have. Just two years ago, my husband and I reported to the NC Wildlife Commission the first sighting of otters in Deep Creek. First ever in Person County. We have mussels that are in our creek. They are freshwater mussels, and they are only in clean water. We have frogs in that creek that would not live there if that water were not clear, clean water. It is not right what is happening to this county. Mr. Powell, I heard you say earlier that you looked forward to serving the people of Person County. I've met you several times over the years. My maiden name was Powell, so you have stuck out in my mind. But I want to be clear that if you rezone this property, you are not serving Person County.
Next, Diane Lessman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for serving in a hard job. I'm Diane Lessman, 106 Elderberry Lane, Rougemont. As Meg referred to, and as you probably know, world leaders gathered last week in Dubai, United Arab Emirates, for the World Climate Action- United Arab Emirates for the World Climate Action Summit. The biggest takeaway was the need to end our dependence on fossil fuels as soon as possible. The clock on worldwide environmental disaster isn't ticking, it's pounding. Do we care? Here in Person County, we're asked to look backwards. If you proceed, first recognize that Dominion's projected 93 million in economic development is possibly fiction. This LNG plant will support the very robust economic growth underway in Durham, Raleigh, RTI, and nearby communities. Their economic growth is the dog that wags this LNG tail. Don't expect us to believe the promise that the Dominion LNG tail will wag the economic dog here. That's just not the way it works. Two solid years of construction 24/7 is a huge burden for the entire county. What type of oversized vehicles will transport the vast amount of construction materials involved? What roads will be used? Which ones will be straightened or widened? What provisions will be made for emergency vehicles, school buses, law enforcement, and residents using the roads? Light and noise pollution will be incessant and damage to soil, water, and all living things on these 486 acres will be irreversible. That's week one. This plan fulfills the business plans for Dominion Energy and Enbridge Incorporated. There is little or no benefit for Person County whom you have all promised to serve. At the very least, let's not be their pawns. The costs are just too high. Please, no MECC until you know more.
Next, Jim Wall.
Good evening. My name's Timothy Wall. I live on Rougemont Road in Rougemont. I, like so many others I've heard this evening, moved to the rural area from Mecklenburg County to get out of that mess and to live a more peaceful life. I'm going to be brief because I think there's something that perhaps you guys have not considered, and that is insurance. I have been in the insurance business for 40 decades, 46 years exactly. I am an agent and broker, Lloyd's of London, registered representative, and I'm asking you if you've considered the impact it's going to have on the residents, probably within a 25-mile radius, as far as insurance affordability. The premiums will go up, companies will not write, and we're challenged enough being in an area that has a fire department, that's a volunteer in a protection class nine. I heard this gentleman talk about they're working with first responders to ensure safety. If we have the worst fire department classification, not only in the state but in the country, I don't know how they can be working. So you're asking us, in my mind, to subsidize Dominion and every resident that was within this 25 miles would probably have to pay higher premiums. Sounds to me like Bidenomics, so thank you.
Rhonda Courier.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Hi. I know that you've heard from me. I've sent a lot of emails out because this has really caused a lot of concern for me. I really don't think a lot has been taken into consideration as to what this is going to do to the environment, how it's going to impact the residents, especially those who are going to be sharing this as their neighbor. I will not be directly beside this facility. I live on the other side of 501, but I feel for all of these people and you should too. This speaks volumes, the people that have shown up to speak out against this. I have taught many preschoolers throughout the years and the thought that this is going to be within a six-mile radius of an elementary school, Helena Elementary School, is appalling to me. There is not going to be a dome over this facility that is going to prevent particulates that are in the atmosphere from blowing in any direction that will not only impact the residents that live there, but the children that play at that school. So I want you to really take into consideration that this is a really, really big decision and you are here to serve the people and these are your people. Thank you.
James Huey.
Can we have the name again, please?
James Huey.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is James Huey and I'm an attorney with the Southern Coalition for Social Justice. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on behalf of the neighbors opposed to Mariah Energy Center, NOMAC, and several individuals named in our written comments. I would like to take this opportunity here to present our climate's primary concerns, but in the interest of time, we've also submitted more extensive comments to you in writing for your consideration, which have been emailed to the Commissioners and handed up in hard copy this evening, which we incorporate here by reference. We respectfully but strongly urge that this rezoning be denied or delayed until such time as these concerns and the others presented this evening are able to be addressed. Delay is a viable option. As proposed, this rezoning is inconsistent with the Person County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and wholly out of character with the surrounding community. This rezoning also fails to pass even a sniff test for reasonableness when considering factors such as the size, physical condition, and other attributes, including the character of the surrounding community of the area to be rezoned. The detriments to neighbors and the surrounding community are extraordinary and include air, water, noise, and light pollution, as well as aquifer depletion, drinking water contamination, and harm to the property values and aesthetic enjoyment of the residents. This reversal in policy from the most protective zoning designation, rural conservation, to the most exploitive, heavy industrial undermines the community's ability to rely on the entire zoning schema writ large and is antithetical to the purpose of zoning policy. None of these inevitable impacts can be reasonably determined to be in the public interest. The risks are further heightened by our foreknowledge that Dominion intends to sell its operations to Enbridge, a Canadian company notorious for its poor safety and environmental record. There's been no meaningful discussion by this body about the safety concern posed by the storage of 25 million gallons of liquefied methane in this community. Whatever purported benefit is supposed to come to the community in the form of temporary construction jobs is far outweighed by the number of well-known harms to human health, air and water resources, and property and business values that will result from this facility. In conclusion, if this board moves forward, you are obligated to consider not only the impacts from the Mariah Energy Center, but from all industrial uses authorized by this rezoning, in the event that the Dominion or Enbridge feels its storage facility is no longer necessary. Thank you for your time and we hope measure consideration will lead you to the next opportunity.
Vonda France.
Good evening and thank you for giving our views. I am, I think I'm sort of near the end of the list and I actually want to give 12 reasons why this plant should not come to Person County. And I probably won't get through the entire list in my two minutes. Number one, this is a time to reduce, not proliferate fossil fuel infrastructure. Number two, natural gas is methane. Methane is in many ways even worse than coal as a climate warming material. I know the state has approved natural gas as a cleaner fuel, but there is a lot of research to be done to find that that is not really the case. Number three, the benefits to Person County are negligible. Very few permanent jobs are expected. Specialized jobs may not be offered to Person County residents. Number four, natural gas is only available in a small portion of the county. This gas will mostly serve people southeast of Person County. In any case, it's only eight days' worth of gas and according to Dominion, may only be used three or four days. This gas is not needed. Tax revenue from the site will provide about 1% of the county budget, not making a significant difference. Number six, the county's roads may be damaged without state funds available for repair, degrading the quality of your life in the county. Number seven, many risks accompany this facility. Our volunteer fire departments are not equipped for possible explosions and fires at the site. The county's cost for equipment and incidents will further reduce any tax benefit. Number eight, there's a risk of groundwater and well pollution, as it has happened at similar sites. The polluted area would experience a decrease in economic value, thus reducing tax revenue to the county.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Kathy Buckley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kathy Buckley with the North Carolina Alliance to Protect Our People and the Places We Live, the Other Apple. To continue Vonda's list. Number nine. There are rare and protected species and streams that drain from the site. These will be jeopardized by both sedimentation and water pollution and are subject to required protections not provided for by this proposal. Number 10, it's truly a stretch to state that the proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan. Industrial uses should not be scattered unpredictably over agricultural and residential areas where citizens have made their homes. If a use like this can be put in a rural residential area like that proposed for this project, then no home in the county is safe from changes that could devalue the big investment that a home represents. This is not, number 11, this is not a facility that will bring economic development to the county. There is nothing in a project of this type that would appeal to individuals or businesses to draw them to live or invest in Person County. Number 12, there are many requirements that could be made of the applicant that could at least mitigate some of these impacts. However, once they have the required zoning, they will have rights to build and your ordinances do not contain any protections that should be in place for such a use. I'll just add that Duke and Dominion are monopolies. There are other ways to handle this, such as putting rooftop solar in people's houses. We have almost none of that in North Carolina because, we have almost none of that in North Carolina because that would allow our residents to compete with Duke and Dominion. They don't want that. They want a monopoly. They're a monopoly and they want to keep it that way. Thanks for your time.
Next, Lib Hutchby.
Thank you. It's good to see you again and I hope that you have learned a lot about the community since you came and tonight. I'm thinking about the children again. You asked me when I first came why I was here. I am actually one of those who came to Roxborough right out of college. It was my first job was right here in Roxborough, so I have a fondness for it, though I now live in Orange County. So, "We are the protectors." This is a new children's book that got my attention and I want it to get your attention. It has, in the very end of it, a pledge. Here is the pledge. Earth Stewart and Water Protector Pledge. I will do my best to honor Mother Earth and all its living beings, including the water, the land. I will always remember to treat the earth as I would like to be treated. I will treat the winged ones, the crawling ones, the four-legged, the two-legged, the plants, the trees, rivers, lakes, the earth, with kindness and respect. I pledge to make this world a better place by being a steward of the earth and a protector of the water. That's what we ask our children to do, right? We ask each other to do that. But what we're saying tonight is, we feel deeply that the land and the water and the air are not being respected by putting Mariah Energy Center in Person County. Commissioners, Jimi Hendrix said, "When the power of love overcomes the love of power, the world will know peace." Commissioners, the people of Person County who understand hard work and bless their food, understanding that pipeline leaks can ruin soil and contaminate water. Clean soil and water are required to grow healthy food. So we all say we want our children to eat healthy and we want us to all be healthy. So I appreciate especially those tonight who are farmers and whose land adjoins this proposed facility. Your constituents are depending on you to say no to rezoning for LNG in Person County.
Thank you.
Michael Savino.
I'm Michael Savino. I live in southeast Person County and I could give you lots of facts and figures, but we've heard plenty tonight. You asked us to show respect this evening and it's kind of hard for me to gather you've shown us respect by doing all this in secret, but I want to give you the opportunity to work together with us. You know, I haven't heard much of, you know, we've talked about what we don't want, but I have a vision for Person County that, imagine, this is part of my vision. What if we, in Person County, if we grew like three-fourths of our food? You know, if you go in the grocery store, you barely see any. What if we, what if we really committed to that and knew that our food supply was secure no matter what happened outside of here? And so that's a little part of my vision. I want to hear other people's visions too, but I challenge you to give us six months, us Personians, to come up with our own plan for this part of the county and see if we can meet it, to come up with something that will provide economic development that really serves this county. That's my challenge to you. Please delay this for six months and challenge us, see if we're any good at this. Thank you. Who's with me? Who will work with me on this? Okay, find me afterwards.
Catherine Spann.
Studying laws based on the principle that people deserve predictability as they invest in land, normally the biggest investment we make in our lives. When we buy a house, we want to feel secure that the neighborhood won't radically change. For example, who wants to have a factory suddenly sprout next to their home in the country? Zoning changes legally require a statement of consistency with existing zoning for just that reason. Changes should be gradual, both in type, for example, from rural conservation to residential, and in location, expanding a commercial area to include adjacent parcels. Another basic principle of zoning is to cluster together uses that need the same kind of heavy infrastructure and have similar impacts. Person County's current zoning does just that. You look at the zoning map and you'll see that its industrial zoning runs along Highway 501 and near the Duke Coal Fared Power Plant, which is supplied by railway. Clustering deploys the county's tax dollars in a more efficient way rather than requiring the county to spread itself thin to provide industrial infrastructure and services to disconnected sites. This proposal would be the opposite. It's essentially spot zoning, dropping industrial zoning into the middle of a huge area of rural conservation and residential zoning. Person County should not throw its established zoning aside for this new project, which promises neither jobs nor lifestyle amenities for Person County residents, and instead leaves county residents bearing all the risk and consequences. The entire purpose for this peak shaving plant is to reduce costs for downstream urban customers in other counties. If Person County approves the proposed rezoning, which flies in the face of its own comprehensive plan, pardon me, two more sentences, it sets the worst kind of precedent. Any parcel in any part of this county could be radically rezoned. Such governmental unpredictability also does not position Person County well to attract new residents and businesses of the sort that would actually contribute to a vibrant, flourishing community and robust diversified tax base. Thank you so much for your time.
Hey, good evening. I'm James Mims. I live over on Stony Mountain Road in Rougemont. Actually, just recently moved here. I just did 20 years of Air Force and decided to retire here because I just want it kind of peace and quiet. You can really get out here. I just want to know what we're going to do if, when the contamination does happen. Because let's be honest, no matter what you build, something's going to happen, a leak's going to occur, and it's going to affect all water in our wells. Just please vote no one's proposal.
Holly Ann Rogers.
I'll only say two sentences because I offered to yield my time to the gentleman who was so eloquent earlier. 12 permanent jobs and a minimal tax, a minimal, minimal difference in the tax base over the next 20 years is not worth trading the health, safety, and economic stability of Person County citizens. Citizens you all represent and have pledged to serve. Gentlemen, don't let this be your legacy as Person County Commissioners. You could do better.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Caroline Hansley. I'm an organizer with the Sierra Club and we have more than 500 members here in Person County. Today, I submitted almost 1,000 petitions against the rezoning request from Dominion and I want to make a note that more than 350 people attended tonight, standing room only as you can see. People were even denied entrance into this hearing. One thing that has not been raised tonight is that Dominion's proposal includes two liquefied natural gas storage tanks, each with gas equivalent capacity of 2 billion cubic feet. That's approximately 160 feet high and about 200 feet in diameter, as was, as well as untold additional mileage, diameter, and pressure of new pipelines. What makes this even more concerning is that this week, we just learned in October, Duke requested Piedmont Service in North Carolina, also known as Dominion, also known as potential future Enbridge, request that, that requested the Utilities Commission to allow them to transport gas on Duke Energy's behalf to use at other sites in Person County. Within this confidential agreement, all the public knows is that Dominion has proposed to construct, quote, incremental facilities to provide the natural gas transportation. This agreement Dominion submitted, as I said, is confidential, which means the public has no insight into how much bigger in scope this project could become or what more Duke and Dominion are planning behind the scenes. That means more uncertainty for residents near this proposed facility and potentially even more infrastructure build-out than any of us knows about if this rezoning request is re-granted, or sorry, is granted, excuse me. I also submit an organizational sign-on letter, which I'll bring to you in a moment, with more than 15 organizations signed on, asking for you to deny or delay the rezoning request. Further, and my last point is that more than 30 speakers, I'm number 35, have spoken against this tonight 100% and against. Please deny or delay the rezoning request.
Next is Katie Zimmerman.
My name is Katie Zimmerman. Thank you, Person County Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here in my role as the Pamlico Tar River Keeper, speaking on behalf of the nonprofit Sound Rivers and our more than 2,800 members throughout southeastern North Carolina. As a nonprofit dedicated to protecting the Noose and Tar Pamlico watersheds, Sound Rivers is concerned about the impacts that a project of this scale will have on downstream endangered and threatened species, excuse me, who inhabit the Flat River Aquatic Natural Area about five miles downstream. The construction of large developments like the Mariah LNG proposal can lead to sediment pollution that degrades water quality and harms aquatic species, a leading cause of population decline for all of the threatened species that have been documented just downstream of the proposed site as sediment pollution. As it stands, this project could harm these species and Dominion has provided no information about how they plan to mitigate those impacts and claim that there won't be any impacts. Please require Dominion to develop a habitat conservation plan for the several endangered and threatened species that have been documented and are known to occupy Deep Creek and the Flat River downstream of the project site, including the Atlantic Pigtoe Muscle, the Noose River Water Dog, the Green Floater, and the Carolina Mad Tom. Please also require Dominion to commit to a strong sediment and erosion control and stormwater measures that go above the baseline as a condition for this rezoning approval. Additionally, Dominion should work with the Fish and Wildlife Service to conduct onsite surveys for any possible ESA listed species on the project site. I'll skip to my closing statement as I'm running out of time, but a project of this size and impact must be done right rather than rushed across the finish line. Approval of this project today will bring lasting impacts to the community and this part of the watershed. Please delay this vote until Dominion can provide the necessary assurances to prevent harmful impacts to local waterways, groundwater resources, and endangered species that are of great value to Person County. Thank you.
Just in case, you have not forget about the incident in Texas. I'd like to follow up. This is for your benefit. There's five copies of an article about what happened in Texas that I think is a similar facility. I won't take up a whole lot of your time. I will just say to thee people, is this worth $25 apiece? That's what the $810,000 is worth to the citizens.
The last speaker we have signed up is Anderson Clayton.
Haven't been at one of these meetings in a minute, so hello, everybody. Thank you Commissioners for the time and giving everybody the opportunity for public opinion. I want to give a shout out to all the young people here in the room with us tonight. And you guys, raise your hands if you're under the age of 30 and you're here tonight and you're here to stand up against this. Because y'all need to know what the future of Person County is telling every single one of you. And I'm looking at the three of you because y'all two just got elected and I know that that doesn't really bode well for when a group of folks like this are trying to say, we want y'all to not do something, but y'all are looking at getting, trying to get re-elected in 2024, I do believe. And everybody in this room here tonight is bearing witness to what you are deciding to do for the future of our county. And you're going to have to pay for it at some point in time. And if that means you've got to do it without losing this money from these two gentlemen right here, or if that means losing your seats next year, one way or the other, the people in this room are going to speak and the young people in this room and in this county are going to speak. And they have here tonight and we're going to continue to do so. But I want to make sure all of you hear me now and say, I've never seen, and I've been to a lot of these meetings as a young person, 25 in this county, right? About how many people are here tonight to tell y'all not to do this? And as my good friend who just saw here earlier and said, y'all sound like y'all are trying to have biodynamics in this county, I'm the North Carolina Democratic Party Chair, so I can tell you all, this issue is not partisan, right? It's just political at this moment in time. And it's about money and padding the pockets in this county or making the people in this room know that you value and you hear their voices in this room. So y'all got a decision to make. Do you like where you're sitting and do you want to stay there next year?
All right, call the orders. All right, quiet, please. We still have business to conduct. Madam Clerk is...
That concludes our speech.
That concludes, that concludes the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Chairman, I'll make a motion, close the public hearing.
Have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing. Any comments or further questions? Here are none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. 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 opposed, motion carried. Item number two on the agenda would be consideration to grant or deny the request for rezoning, map, and amended application RZO 223 is to be considered at this time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, let me, for a moment, review where the Planning Board, Board of Commissioners, has been in this process and to address one legal issue and then between the Planning Director and I, I know and perhaps the County Manager, we're certainly happy to answer questions that Commissioners might have. One of the speakers, a good lawyer, mentioned one legal issue that I wanted to address with the assistance of the Planning Director, Mr. Bowley, and that is this. This zoning classification that is requested by the applicant in the general industrial zone, if the Board were to approve the request, does have a list of permitted uses, the general industrial classification. I wonder if Mr. Bowley would help me provide additional information to assist the Board in your further consideration of the matter before you. That list of permitted uses in this zoning classification.
Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney. So just so I understand, you want me to just read the list of the permitted uses?
And for this purpose, to eliminate the Commissioners. The gentleman stated correctly that this is, for just one moment, this is a legislative rezoning request. This is not one of those quasi-judicial proceedings that you all have enjoyed so much in the past where in those cases you were confined to considering only evidence presented during the public hearing relevant to the matter. That is why, in this case, you all have been free to, legally free, to receive, consider, maybe respond to, if you wanted, information, communications on both sides of this issue, and I know you have done that. The law does require that you all take into consideration in this legislative rezoning request, the entire list of permitted uses in this zoning classification and be aware of that and consider it. So that's my purpose for asking the Planning Director to remind you of that list.
Okay, yes, sir. Just for the source for everybody, this is coming out of the county's planning ordinance. It's Table of Permitted Uses Appendix C, which lists permitted uses by zoning district. For the general industrial, you have accessory building, accessory uses, sorry, aircraft, equipment, parts and supplies, airline ticket agency, airport operations, airstrips, private heliport without commercial activity. Would you like me to read just permitted uses or special use permit?
I'd just the permitted uses.
Just permitted uses. Automobile off-street parking, commercial, automobile rentals and leasing, bus station activities, church, church, temples, and synagogues, construction trades, which includes building, heating, electrical, plumbing, fire sprinklers and others, excluding outside storage of equipment or supplies, daycare center, equipment rental, event center, fire station, law enforcement operations, light industrial, heavy industrial, office and professional office, post office, radio, telephone, and TV transmitting tower, school, private or public, elementary, secondary, or higher level, taxi cab stand operation, temporary construction building, tire recapping, tobacco sales, travel agencies, variety gift, and hobby supply sales.
Thank you. Between the Planning Director and I, Commissioners, we're happy to answer questions about what Mr. Bowley just said or requirements of the planning ordinance in general. One more comment from me at the moment and then I'll be quiet and let the Board get on with your consideration. You all have several potential actions that you could take, including approval, denial. Several of the speakers mentioned postponement. You can certainly do that if the Board were to wish to do so. If there is a motion to approve, the proper motion is as stated in the abstract. With that, I'll be quiet, happy to answer questions.
Board member questions? Here are none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we do at this point then need to have a motion to approve or deny the request for a rezoning. Okay, we, we do at this point then need to have a motion to approve or deny the request for rezoning. Chairman Powell, I make a motion that we're free to rezoning from RC rule, conservation to general industrial. Have a motion on the floor?
And does the motion include everything that was stated in the abstract? I join Mr. Bowley in recommending to you that that be the motion if you wish to consider approval. May I read that? Shall I read that?
It's not what's on page 15.
It's, well, it's, I'm looking at the agenda abstract where it says recommended action. It says, I hereby move to adopt rezoning map amendment, application, RZ-0223 from RC, which is rural conservation, and R residential to GI, general industrial, and find it consistent with the Person County and City of Roxboro Joint Comprehensive Land Use Plan, specifically guiding principles 2.1, 2.4 and 2.7 to facilitate sustainable economic growth. Would the gentleman consider that motion?
Exactly. I just didn't read it word for word as you did. Thank you.
For the record.
We do have a motion on the floor. Any discussion, further questions, comments?
Read the signs.
Here none, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Either, either, either quiet so we can continue business or you'll be escorted out of the building. Order, please. Order, please. Next. Okay. If you folks want to stay, you can stay, but you're gonna be quiet. Sheriff. Our next agenda item is public, public comment period. Ah, officers, would you take care of this, please? Thank you. Escort them out of here. I listen to you.
And then filing open today for those three seats sitting right there. And y'all can do it, you can run, you can represent this county.
Get her out, get her out. Every one of them, every one of them.
I'm just... I don't, I don't understand.
Any questions for the commissioners? My grandson, he's across the street, he's poisoning our future.
Ma'am, if you give it to the firm, she'll give it to him.
We will continue under order, order here in this room. And the next agenda item is informal comments, which are 10 minutes set aside for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Chairman, we do not.
No one requested to speak. Item number three on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, approval of the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as suggested to include the November 20th minutes as amended and to add additional item to the consent agenda, which is approval of bonds of the finance director, the register of deeds, the tax administrator and the sheriff. Have a motion on the floor? Would you like to remain in this room now?
No, I'm gonna leave.
Please, please.
Same.
Please leave.
You're poisoning us. Please don't touch me. Please don't, no, please don't touch me. More shame, more shame. God help you. God help you.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. I have, we do have, we need a motion from the floor for the consent agenda with the adjusted items that I just called off.
I think there was a motion.
That was. He made a motion. You did make it, I'm sorry. I wonder if I heard any of it. So, okay, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, none, motion carried. New business, item number four, presentation by Sonia Carver to award contract to benefits consultant. Thank you.
Voice tonight, so I hope you can understand me. We're here as a staff recommendation for us to continue our contract with Mark III brokers. We had our management team get together and review all of the RFPs that we received from brokers, and we received a total of five. We went through an evaluation process, and on the information that's included in your packet, it shows the average scores for each of the top three brokers. We are recommending from the staff to continue with Mark III, to continue our contract. They have provided us outstanding service along the way, guided us through some tough, hard claims that we've had throughout the years. And we would like to continue with them to see what else we can do in the future.
Board member questions? So you had, how many total?
We had a total of five.
Total of five.
Yes, sir.
And the top three?
Top three were Mark III as number one, which was the one that was highly recommended from the group. Pierce Group scored second, and then Gallagher scored third.
Okay, okay. Board member, any questions of, Ms. Carver? Anyone? Okay, here none, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve, Chairman Powell.
Have a motion to approve the request on the floor. Any further comments or questions? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item number five, presentation by Manager Kathy.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of the county attorney. So as you know, Ellis Hankins has served as the Person County Attorney since March of 2021, and he announced his retirement effective... Partner with the firm and is available to serve as the... He just updates the agreement to indicate that Mr. Morpheus will serve as the county attorney, and that will be effective January 1st. And so if the board does approve this revised memorandum of understanding, oath of office as county attorney to Mr. Morpheus.
Board members, speak up. I make a motion that we approve TC Morpheus to come in as our new attorney. A motion on the floor, further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, motion carried, unanimous and welcome. Welcome, look forward to working with you beginning January 1st. And with, with all that pain here, we are sad to see our current attorney leave us. Ellis has been with us now four years, what's, not, we'll call it four years. But it's been a pleasure to work with you, always responsive, always return my calls, day or night, weekend, holidays, or out of the country. You've done that on a couple of occasions, so always responsive, always giving us good, sound legal advice. And that's what we need because we don't, we don't know the laws as you do, and we depend on you for that. So you've done an outstanding job. So I'd like to present this to you, and it says, presented to S. Ellis Hankins. Thank you for your service as Person County Attorney, March 2021 to December 2023.
Chairman, moment of personal privilege, if I may. This is the most exciting I've had all day and this evening.
Whew, wow.
I just, but the rest of this will be the truth. It has been a pleasure and a privilege to, to serve Person County and to work with you all, board members and county staff, and one previous commissioner also. You know, I've, I've held a license to practice law for 43 years, and I've enjoyed that on almost every day. And those, most of the days when I didn't, there were some members of the General Assembly involved, and not that one, but back in the old days, when I walked around the legislative building a lot when I was much younger. I appreciate the opportunity you all have given me to serve. I assure you, you will be in good hands with this one of my law partners and the others. And they'll continue to represent the county well. I told you all earlier that the time had just come because of a combination of circumstances. I intended to retire right now, but it is now time. I remember years ago when Justice Thurgood Marshall was retiring from the Supreme Court. At a press conference, a reporter asked him, well, Mr. Justice Marshall, why are you retiring? And his raspy voice looked down his nose, he said, because I'm old. Well, I don't admit that yet, but it is time, and thank you all again.
Any comments? Yeah, well, thank you for your service.
Ellis, I'd just like to say, you know, we, and we take, we talk about this every time we talk about attorneys and we're in a situation that we're not sure the direction from a legal standpoint to go. And we rely heavily on you and your experience and your expertise with the law. And we kind of joke a little bit about that, but we, we don't want to be wearing orange, you know? And, and so we look for our attorney to keep us out of that trouble, and you've done a great job. And I appreciate everything you've done, and I'm looking forward to working with your firm over the next year. I know you're gonna do just as good a job, but thank you for your service, thank you for everything.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess I need to administer this, uh, to our new attorney. Oath of office, Person County Attorney. P. D. Can you please? I, TC Morpheus Jr.
I, TC Morpheus Jr.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of said state.
And the laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discourage.
And that I will faithfully discourage.
The duties of my office as Person County Attorney, so help me God.
Oh, that I will faithfully discharge.
I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm not able to...
The duties of my office as Person County Attorney, so help me God.
Congratulations. I like you. Thank you, sorry, sorry about that. Okay, that is, that concludes our business part, I guess. Chairman's report. This will be the last official meeting before the Christmas holidays and the Christmas season, we'd say, to speak, or so speak. And I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, this board, this staff, and the people of Person County as well, and I hope you have safe and enjoyable holidays, and look forward to that. From an economic standpoint, I would encourage the people of Person County to shop local. The money that you spend, local. The money that you spend local goes a long, long way, and, and the merchants, there's so much here in Person County, the city and the county, to be engaged in, in your shopping, and so take your special person out and buy a lot, I would say, for the Christmas holidays. But again, thank you all, and enjoyable holidays. My manager, Kathy?
Yes, I would also like to express my gratitude to Ellis for serving as our county attorney. We've certainly benefited from his expertise in local government, his wisdom, and his sound guidance when it comes to legal matters, so I've enjoyed working with you, and thank you very much. I also just want to remind the board and the public that we have the board's strategic planning retreat coming up on Thursday morning. It's at 9:00 a.m., and we'll be upstairs in boardroom 215, so look forward to seeing you there.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the Sheriff's Department who's here today. Thank you for helping with crowd control. It was a very difficult situation, and we had a lot of people here that voiced their concerns about Dominion, and so I kind of knew it wasn't going to be easy, and with this, and so thank you, again, thank you for that. And I, and I do mean this, I do appreciate everyone that comes out to this meeting and expresses their concern about something we're voting on, and whether it goes your way or not your way, I do want to thank you for at least coming out here and, and sharing your voice, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Palmer?
Ellis, it's been a great pleasure to have you onboard with us for two, and so I think more than two years. You've been a gentleman, you've been a great servant, you've helped the county tremendously. I look forward to working with TC. I do appreciate the crowd for coming tonight, sharing their concerns. Moving forward though, there are things that need to be changed around here, and that's one giant step that we took. That's all I have.
Commissioner Perry here.
Just want to echo what the previous two commissioners have said in relation to their thanks for Ellis for doing an admirable job as our county attorney. I've said many times, by far the best that I've been, I had the privilege to work along with. I wish you the very best in this next phase of your life, and also, again, would like to thank the Person County Sheriff's Department tonight.
Commissioner Thomas?
Just echo what everyone else has said. Ellis, I wish you the best on retirement, enjoy your time. I mean, why would you want to leave?
Everything's better in person.
But again, thanks to the Sheriff's Department for their hard work tonight and keeping us safe.
And I would revert back to, to that as well. I, it's been a little bit of a hotspot tonight, so forgive me. I do appreciate the presence of the Sheriff's Department here tonight and the officers who maintain control, I think, in a professional manner, and help us, helped us to get on with our business as we need to conduct here in the county. Okay, at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session number one, per general statute 143, 318, 11A4, with County Manager Kathy, Clerk to the Board, Ms. Solomon, Attorney Hankins, Economic Director, Brandon Lynch, Economic Development Commission, no, I'm sorry, just through, Lynch. That would be it. Okay, I have a motion to go into closed session number one. Subway? Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll need